Good evening. Thank you for joining us here at Willard School. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right. Thank you. We're going to start our evening today with a student presentation from the Emma Hart Willard School. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Correa. Dr. Correa, excuse me.
Hi, everybody. Welcome to Willard. Tonight we have a special presentation for you regarding math. But we're going to begin. The best part about tonight is that we have several students here to interact with our board and to work with you all tonight. Our board members are going to be partnering with our students. So get ready. We have a fun meeting for you. So Mrs. Watson, if you want to grab that real quick. We are just going to turn the board slightly so you can see it.
We're good except for Tim.
So thanks for joining us tonight for a mathematical experience. Mrs. Watson and I have been talking a lot about math this year. Part of our initiative for our district is that we are working with a group that is implementing Math Studio. And we'll talk to you a little bit about what that is, what our teachers are involved in, and really, more importantly, the work that the students are doing this year. So tonight, our agenda is to discuss with you Math Studio and the professional development that our teachers in grades four and five have received, as well as providing math experience for students and our board of ed members. So as I shared with you, last year, we began our professional development with Math Studio. Math Studio was brought into work with grades four and five. This year, we've actually started working a little bit with two and three, and that's our future work for next year. So really, what was the purpose of Math Studio? Where did we come from and how did it begin? Well, teachers were in the building, instructional leaders, administrators. We began by really reflecting on our own instructional practices. We really were forced to consider, are our students mathematically engaged? And what does that mean for a student to be mathematically engaged? And really, we were forced and pushed into thinking about how and if our current practice that we're using here in Berlin really aligns with the Common Core standards and the Common Core standards for math content in practice. So as a district, grades four and five, from Griswold, Hubbard, and Willard together, opened their doors. The teachers opened their doors and shared their students, their practices, and their ideas. Coaches supported the work we were doing with students and provided authentic training. What's great about this is a lot of times in the education field, you get professional development that is key. You hire someone to come in, they share with you their ideas and their practices, and that is not what Math Studio is. Math Studio came to us. They're working authentically with our teachers. They're looking at Berlin. They're looking at the curriculum more influencing in our classrooms. And they're really helping our teachers based on wherever they are. Our educators are in different places based on experience and background. They're really helping them to develop and strengthen their own practice. And really, the focus has been helping teachers really shift their minds from math procedural to conceptual understanding and helping students really walk away with a conceptual understanding of mathematics. As a district, we explored what does an effective math classroom look like? What does it provide to students? And what opportunities are available to students each day? What does the research say? We're looking at current research. And very importantly, we're looking at how do children learn mathematics? And it's very different from the way even educators were trying to teach students how to teach mathematics. We're looking at current research and how that really tells us and pushes us into thinking about how do students learn mathematics best? And what can we do today to really support them and their math skills? Mrs. Watson?
So as we're working with our teachers and students, we're using a tool that the company has designed that we're working with. And it gives us a lot of information. We go into classrooms, things to look for, things to focus on. And we've actually hand-selected, as we've gone through the practice, the different areas of focus based, again, as Mr. Correa said, where we are in the process. So one of the most important indicators for student success is our teacher quality. And we have been doing a phenomenal job. Our teachers here are amazing, as you already know, I'm sure. And they are working really, really hard to develop their students' math understanding. We have actually heard from the middle school this year that the students came up and could talk math better than they've ever seen. And that's because of the work that's being done in fourth and fifth grade. So we're excited to keep this moving and bring in our second and third grade teachers. So what we do when we work with teachers is we focus on the catalytic teaching routines and teaching habits. Some of the pieces to that include structuring worthwhile talk with our students. So if we're going to have discourse, it needs to be purposeful. Okay? And we want to confer with students and ask questions so that we're understanding their thinking, not funneling their thinking and getting them to say exactly what we want, but what do they think? We're looking at ways to demonstrate public records of their thinking so they can look at representations, look at different pathways, and that they can talk, they can find similarities, they can find differences, they can make connections between things, and explore new ideas. So there are a number of things we're doing here. And all of this work that the teachers do -- hit the slide. -- is in an effort for students to develop their math habits of mind in interaction. So you've probably heard about the habits of mind we've done work with in the past. Well, now it's mathematized, and we're really getting kids to work through their stuck points to persevere, we're getting them to ask questions, to listen to each other, to understand each other's thinking, critique and debate, and really look at ways to reason and persevere. And in the end, our goal is for them to justify why something made sense and how it can be generalized to other situations. So we're trying to build that vertical piece for them. So when they move forward into the next grade level, they still remember what they've learned, and they can apply it to something new and different. So with that, we are going to do a quick activity. We are board members tonight and some of our fifth grade students from Willard School. Ms. Passavento is here to help us out, and we're very excited. She was very gracious to offer to help us at the last minute. Our math specialist had a family emergency, and very, very sorry she could not be here. She has to take care of her family tonight. And so Ms. Passavento offered to step in. And so we're going to give her a little break on that. All right, our fifth grade students who are here to join us, could you just come up to the chair, please?
You are in a moment. So what we're seeing right now with our students and our board members is a problem they haven't seen before, and we're going to share it with you in a moment. And it's very typical for when you would see a fifth grade classroom. What you're going to notice is we have eight students up here. Aiden, Mateo, Matthew, Nora, Nina, Romeo, Emma, and Maya. And they've agreed to come here tonight, do a little math with our board of ed members. So, board of ed members, superintendent, this is superintendent, they're going to be joining you shortly. But first, we're going to give everyone a little bit of time, right? Mrs. Watson, to look at the problem first.
Absolutely. So one of the strategies that we use in our classroom is the free read strategy. And what we do is we look at the different parts of the question, and we ask ourselves, what do we know and what do we still need to figure out? So what I'm going to ask everybody who has a math problem in front of them, and you guys will have the math problem in front of you, is just being curious of what do we know in this problem and why do we still need to figure out? I'm going to give you what we call in our math habits, our purposeful private reasoning. So give you just a minute for you to work through that, and then we'll talk about it all together. So it's the same problem up on there. We're just wanting to see.
I apparently want to be part of that group.
Is that because you don't want to do a math problem?
Apparently.
Matt ate one half of his candy bar after lunch. Julia said she ate more. Matt said he ate more because one half is bigger than one fourth. Julia said that's not always true. Who's correct? So what do we know so far? Just what do we know?
Stop looking at the adults.
What do we know? Romeo, what do we know? We know they both ate a fraction of their candy bar. That's what we know. What we know. Yeah, so they're having a disagreement. So here's what I'm going to ask you guys to do. What I want us to do is I want us to figure out on our communicator boards, where adults can do like two, or pencil, you're welcome to. I want you to figure out who's correct. And you can do that by drawing one. I'm giving you a moment, and then I'm going to pervert you guys up. Can we all pause?
Are we allowed to ask a question?
Sure.
Is it the same size candy bar?
We don't want it.
We don't?
So right now, we're giving everyone a moment to work through it, and we like to work through it because it has a deeper. So then, we can share out how that purposeful discipline is.
Wonderful.
But which candy bar is bigger?
That's what I said, which bar is bigger?
Perfect, Mr. Fisher.
You're mine.
Cake's going down by himself.
Will you come around, though? Because I can't get down.
Let's see what you got. I'm telling you.
No, come sit next to me.
No? So what do you got?
You sit.
This is the most fun I've ever had with a board.
No, you sit. Because then I feel like I'm important. This is so treatable.
It's bonus day.
One, two, three. I just need to teach your bit.
So here's how I normally structure my talk in my classroom. What I would do is I would say student A or student B, and I would offer students to talk. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask the adults, if you don't mind sharing your thinking first, because our students have very specific math language we use in my classroom. And we're going to add them to, ask them to add on, revoice, agree or disagree, and use their math language to try to show you a little bit what they were thinking. So if adults, if you don't mind sharing your thinking first, and then students can add on, revoice, agree or disagree afterwards. Go for it.
That is my security.
I heard absolutely amazing conversations going on, and a lot of people are having great conversations agreeing or disagreeing, or how does that discollegiate? That's the word that we use in our math habits, where you just, something doesn't feel right. And I think that habit's very beginning when one of our members was like, wait a second, what about the candy bar, guys? So what I'm going to ask you, if you are comfortable sharing out some things, one thing we do in math class, we create public records, because I noticed there are a lot of different strategies that go on. Ms. Watson was talking earlier about using different strategies in order to be able to show our math thinking. There are so many different models and ways that we solve it. So really interested in your part. If you guys don't mind sharing out, does anyone feel comfortable sharing?
So what I did is first, I converted the fractions have a common denominator.
Sure.
So I converted one-fourth into two-eighths, and then I converted one-half into four-eighths. And so since now they have the same denominator, I could find out which one is larger by the same, by what their numerator is. But this isn't, we didn't take into account while solving this problem, the size of the candy bars. So Tracy, I mean--
It's okay. You're good. Mrs. Stink, but you're fine.
She was saying about how what if Julia's candy bar was much larger than Matt's candy bar, then one-fourth would be much larger than one-half of Matt's candy bar. But if they were both equal, or Matt's candy bar was larger, then one-half would be larger, the larger portion.
That's great thinking. Does anyone want to add on, revoice, or ask a genuine question about that? Mateo, what are you thinking?
I think that she's right. I think that Matt ate more of his candy bar than Julia did.
Can you tell a way? Put your hand up.
Because I drew two rectangles right on top of each other.
Okay.
I split one into one, or into a fourth, and I split one into halves. And then I colored them one-half and one-fourth. And I found out that one-half is bigger than one, or is greater than one-fourth. So I know that Matt had one-fourth of his candy bar and Julie had one, Julie had one-fourth and Matt had one-half, which means Matt had more of his candy bar.
So when I went to write, I heard you and Mr. Penney had a great conversation. What's that one but? And it's just what Nina said.
What if the candy bars aren't the same size?
So right here, in the audience, we did model, our candy bars are the same size. But here, we can see a model, and our students can't see that. If our candy bars were a different size. So that's kind of a lot. Can you give me a me too, or a scene of you're fully agreeing with that, and that's the conversation you had in your partnership?
Well, the first thing we found out was that I would ignore my stickers, and I like computer tests.
Perfect.
Which, you know--
Great.
They're the same size.
Yeah.
And we don't think rapidly, so we wound up kind of charting models the same way.
Awesome. So we did some really awesome math thinking here, and we were thinking about fraction and diversity. Some students used it on their algebraic models. So I'm getting one, I see numbers lines when I was walking around. So it was really interesting to see those multiple pathways that they're using. But we came down to one thing, and I think every group said it, it all depends on what?
Size.
So in our math thinking, that's a conjecture that we would have-- and that comes before generalizations, but that's just a conjecture that we're making in the bathroom. So does anyone want to chalk it through that? Romeo, what do you think, Ed?
I was talking with my partner, and I was saying that she said that what if the sizes were like, what if Julia had a king size and what if Matt had a smaller size? And in a way, Julia would be right because, well, Matt or Julia, I don't know. That, yeah, Julia said that it's not always true that one-fourth is bigger than, that one-half is always bigger than one-fourth, because what if it was one and one-fourth, that it would be a whole bigger?
So students in the audience and board members and everyone here, a conjecture that we created today when we were all together is that when comparing fractions, we need to take into consideration the size of the whole. So we agreed, and we talked about who might be right. And in both cases, they could be right. And in some cases, we might say anything was good, and we have no idea. But when we're looking at fractions, we're comparing fractions, we always need to take into consideration the size of the whole. And that's a question, as a conjecture, we might say, is this always true? Is this sometimes true? Or is this never true? My reading.
I actually converted mine into fractions.
Awesome.
I turned the one-fourth into four-sixteenths, and I turned the one-half into eight-sixteenths.
Awesome.
So in this, they'd be the same size. I don't know if that's entirely true, though, that they are the same size.
Okay. So it totally depends on the size of the whole, right? Because you could have drawn a model, and that could absolutely be true. Why don't we have, oh, look at the class. Do you want to thank their partners?
Thank you.
We hope you enjoyed our presentation tonight and a visual of what takes place in our math classes each day in grades four and five. And as Ms. Watson said, we've started in grades two and three this year, and next year, we're excited to move our work into that as well. Because again, it's about really building that conceptual understanding and getting a way to the procedural. And as you can see, students and board members, it's been a lot of great things. So thank you for--
Yeah. You might collect those for me.
Yeah.
To be clear, though, since my name is Matt, I would have eaten all of the candy bar, and I would have eaten more. So--
I would like to make a formal request that we do that every board meeting, because that was a lot of fun. And it was actually, I really liked the way that went. You know, I mean, the whole idea of, here's the question, but you don't have everything you need to answer the question is something that's a lifelong lesson that I think a lot of us see all the time, where people jump to conclusion, and they don't really know the facts. So anyway, that was a cool way to do it. That was a lot of fun for us.
Alex, you can attest, the first answer I wrote down was Greenland, so I definitely am not a bad tangent.
Thank you. We really enjoyed that, in case you can't tell. Next up, we have some special recognition. We have art awards. We recently held our annual art show at the New Britain Museum of American Art, and there were many pieces of artwork there on display. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Benigni.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. If I could, I'd like to have each-- If I could, I'd like to have each student come up one at a time. I'll read your name. I'd like you to show your artwork to the audience and just make a brief comment about your artwork. If I could, first student, which was actually the superintendent's choice, the title was "A Very Good Time" by Ashani Patel. Is Ashani here?
So this is one of my AP art pieces that I did, which was raspberries from over the summer, and it was done in pointillism. So all of it was, the berries were done in pointillism, and so was the basket. And the background was done in scribbling with colored pens.
So I'm not going to ask every administrator to comment, but if, this was my choice, and when I walked into the art museum that day, I just thought of being, picking raspberries with my family and just a lover of raspberries. It just stuck out right away to me. So thank you very much, Ashani. Next, if I could have, this is the Griswold Principal's Choice, David Kitzman. It's "Rainbow Blossoms" by Gretchen Pearl.
Gretchen, come on over here, honey. Go right up to the microphone and show. Let me hold it while you talk.
So this might look very complicated, but it actually wasn't. Um, what we did is we took a white crayon and we had this paper that we drew on Sharpie with to make the design, and we put that under watercolor paper and drew over it with the white crayon. And then all we had to do is simply use watercolor and, yeah. And the reason I called it Rainbow Blossom was because to me, it just looks like rainbows that are blossoming.
I love it. Thank you very much, Gretchen.
All right, never wanted to pass up an opportunity to speak on a microphone. So Gretchen, I want you to know, the reason I selected your artwork too is because we put our artwork in a very special place for the whole year in the hallway. And when I walked in, I saw this and it immediately brightened my mood. And that's what I'm hoping it'll do next year in our main hallway. Nice job, Gretchen, we're very proud of you.
Next, we have the Hubbard's Principal's Choice called "Entitled Self-Portrait" by Addison House. Addison?
So this is my painting of me. I used my favorite color, green, and it was my true color. And so I did three different shades of green, light green, regular green, and dark green. Um, yeah.
Thank you, Addison. Mr. Susan?
Sure. And the reason why I selected the, the portrait was just, might be a little deep, but when I first viewed it, I just thought it was pretty neat that this is a self-portrait of her, but all the different colors, I kind of thought of the different facets of like your personality. If you look at just like, the ears are two different shades, the mouth is, is different shades, her face is different shades. So she is who she is, but all the different facets and pieces that make up who she is. I thought that was a really, a really strong, powerful message that I got from this. That's why I chose it, it was excellent.
Next, we have the Willard's Principal's Choice, entitled "Blue and Red Flower" by Chloe Cuckle. Do you want Mr. Crater for this, or you can talk in the mic, or you want me to hold? Want both to hold, because it's a big one?
Okay.
All right, the microphones are yours.
So I named this "The Blue and Red Flower" because those were one of my two favorite colors, and I thought they would look really nice together. And what I did is I did blues in the light shades and through the middle shades and the dark shades, and I thought it would look really nice, so that's why I did it.
Blue being one of my favorite colors, I, I was immediately drawn to this. And in a season where you've had way too much rain, I know it's needed at times, your picture, Chloe, put a big smile on my face. It reminded me that spring was here and the sun was coming out, and this is just something I could look at all day long. Very proud of you, nice job.
We have the McGee Principal's Choice, entitled "The Guardian." I'm sorry, nope, by, entitled, untitled by Alex Palosik. Is Alex here?
So this is my piece. It's um, it's based off a hummingbird. And um, while I was looking at pictures to do for oil pastel, um, I was looking for a few pictures to do. And as I was looking, I found a hummingbird picture. It looked pretty like complicated, and I thought, this is a challenge that I can do. So I used stippling as a technique for the multicolors on the bird. And yeah, I just had a lot of fun making it.
So when I came into the New Britain Museum of Art, again, I, I was a science teacher, so I love wildlife. And I noticed all the colors, I loved the colors, I like how Alex went from light to dark. You could tell it's very purposeful. Can you explain how you did the background?
Well, honestly, it wasn't too complicated. I just took.
It was complicated.
Well, the background wasn't that hard. I just, I took a paper towel, um, I wrapped it around my finger, and I used my nail to scratch off the background to give it a little floor effect.
Did you invent that yourself, Alex?
No, I learned it from one of my art teachers.
And he learned it from his art teacher, so very nice job. Berlin High School's Principal's Choice in the 2D category, entitled "The New Guardian" by Connor Gagnon.
It's titled "The New Guardian." I made it in Adobe Photoshop, and um, I just used a couple of simple blending methods and tools to create it. Uh, I'd like to thank um, my art teacher, Mrs. Glasso, for helping me make it. And um, yeah, voila.
I really loved Connor's art piece. It was when I walked into the New Britain Art Gallery, it just, it caught my eye and I found myself just continually staring at it. There's actually, if you have a chance to look at it up close, there's a lot of depth to that, um, to what he did and the, just the idea that he combined a lot of images and he brought some really interesting color and everything, and I'm really excited for that to be showcased in our main lobby at the high school.
And also Berlin High School's 3D Choice, entitled "Free and Sophisticated" by Juliana Garcia.
It's called "Free and Sophisticated." I did this in my 3D sculpture class, and um, its whole theme is just supposed to be um, you're a free, you're a free spirit and you're allowed to do whatever you want, expand your wings and just travel. That's all I was having in mind when I was making it. I'm glad you liked it.
So what I loved about this is the fact that Juliana took some, something that for many of us would seem very ordinary in terms of books and pages, and look at what it is that she created. And she also used a variety of different mediums in terms of the wire sculpting and, and yarn and paint and a bunch of other things in order to create this design. And both of these are just wonderful representations of what our students can do at a very sophisticated level when they have the opportunity to study um art as they do at our high school. So we're really, really excited about the work that they do at the high school. Congratulations.
We congratulate all of the award winners. It's phenomenal work, and we're very proud of the work that you've done.
If I could just also thank all of the art teachers in the district, the work that they do with the students, their creativity day in and day out, um, it really shows. And to have an art show that encompasses K-12 is a wonderful event at our museum. And a special thank you to Kathy Miller in the back, previously our K-12 art coordinator who started that first event, so with Mary Smeeley, who's, who's since retired. But we hope to keep that going. So thank you all, and congratulations. Thank you. Next up on our agenda, we have our committee reports. We'd like to start with our student representatives and their report from the high school.
So there's been a couple senior milestones that are coming and going. We had our capstone exhibition last Thursday that went incredible. Uh, senior prom's coming up this Saturday, and we have our awards night tomorrow, actually. And spring sports, last season's winding down. Um, absolute dominance by the redcoats this season, and we won seven division titles. So we've done a great job, it's been a great year.
Also coming up in the next week, the freshmen are visiting the high school on the fourth for the fly-up day. And on the following day, June 5th, the high school's hosting the scholarship night. And that Friday, the 7th, the band's hosting their Jazz with Pizzazz.
Great. Thank you. I will take a break right after we do the committee reports, so if anybody needs to take a break at that point. But um, next up, we have the Student Achievement Committee. I guess they had a meeting earlier today?
We did. We discussed a new geometry textbook that we will be talking more about later on in the meeting for motion and adoption. It ties in nicely with Common Core and some of the other techniques that we're using with geometry, and it's replacing a book that was originally brought into the district or last published in 1992. So it's a nice, nice time for change. Not a lot's changed in the geometry world thankfully, but it's nice to have a new book coming up.
Great, thank you, Tim. And lastly, under this agenda item is correspondence to the board. No correspondence to the board, excuse me. That would be true for the superintendent, but I will say that for me, that would not be true. I've received multiple emails from parents and concerned citizens about the budget process, about some of the items that we had on the list of things that may be reduced. Um, and I want to just go out and thank everybody who took the time to send me or the board something for us to look at as we went through what proofs, it's actually still going on, right? So we're still waiting the results of today's referendum. But it's been a long and tedious, at times frustrating, but, and challenging budget process. So we want to thank you, all the parents, all the citizens for their support as we've gone through this. With that, we'll take a brief recess, five minutes. Uh, there's cookies somewhere in the room, over here, next to Mr. Ursa, which means there may not be as many as we started. But please help yourself on the way out, and then we'll, we'll adjourn. Read your, read. All right, we will re, reconvene our meeting. Uh, next up is the audience of citizens. Is there anybody who would like to address the Board of Education this evening? No hands waving, no jumping up and down, and closed. Okay, consent agenda. Is there anybody who would like to add, remove, or discuss anything from consent agenda? There's only two items in there? All right, then I'll entertain a motion about consent agenda.
Who's to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion by Tim. Second by Jamie. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six-zero. All right, off to new business. First up, UPBEAT, potential service trip to the Dominican Republic. Jack, you're on.
So uh, I'm just here to kind of do an initial presentation about some research I looked into for international service trips. I spoke with Dr. Faso, that has done a number of, I'm sorry, I'm standing right in front of the board here. Has done a number of international trips through his content and through his work with the state, and he put me into contact with a educational, um, educational trip organization called EF Tours. So um, over the last month or so, I've kind of communicated back with them about a potential service trip opportunity for the students at Berlin High. And so I want to go through some, a little information about the trip for you guys. So the first few slides are just um, student, student quotes or teacher quotes about their experience, and I'm not going to necessarily read all of them for you guys, but I can send them to you guys. And I've spoken with some educators in the state of Connecticut that have gone through this company on different service trips as well. So the first one I liked is international travel, travel helped open my eyes and become more in tune with the world around me. Another, a teacher says, streets stepped out of their comfort zones, friendships were strengthened as they experienced this event together. There aren't enough objectives to describe this experience. It was utterly amazing, incredible food, sights, and experience, everyone must go. So today, what we're going to quickly go over is why an international service trip? Uh, why do I, why did I think that this is something that the district needed? What our partnership with this EF Tours, what their kind of background is, where and when we were going, when, where and when we would be going? Outlined tour itinerary, just kind of a, what a day would look like? What's included and what's not included in the cost of the trip? Um, and then price and, uh, this is also a parent PowerPoint, so I'm not going to tell you guys how they're involved, uh, but if you guys give me a thumbs up to kind of move forward with this, that would be great. So uh, if, if anyone doesn't know, I'm Mr. Rudy. I am in charge of the UPBEAT program. I've been at Berlin High for three years. Um, and one thing that I experienced while part of the Berlin School System was my freshman year of high school. The wrestling team would go on an international trip every four years. Uh, they had gone to China, they had gone to Italy, and I was lucky enough to go on the last trip, uh, which was Brazil. Uh, so Coach Day planned these trips every four years, and members of the wrestling team would be able to compete under Team Connecticut and travel on these trips. It wasn't just an athletic competition trip, we also did a level of service. So on our trip to Brazil, uh, we competed with the Brazil national wrestling team when we were in Sao Paulo. We competed in a tournament when we were in Rio. But the most rewarding part for me was our trip to a small village called Puerto Library. There we worked with a minister from the state that was trying to bring wrestling into this small community. So we went into some of the schools and we did wrestling clinics. And it was as a freshman and as someone that ever since middle school wanted to be an educator, wanted to be a teacher, uh, it was definitely an experience that, that I, you know, should ever should remember for, for the, you know, last 15 years. Part of this trip and those first few quotes from students is exactly the same feeling I got from it. It was the experiences, it was the friendships, it was different outlook outside of our Berlin um, community that really kind of made me want to step out post-high school, uh, going a little bit farther outside of Connecticut, um, when I decided to attend college. Sadly, I didn't have an opportunity to travel when I was in college, but um, I think giving our students more of an opportunity now will help them, because a lot of college tracks, uh, now they're being more strict of like, you have to complete certain things at certain times. And um, international travel is definitely more encouraged in college, uh, but sometimes it's harder for a student. So I think, um, giving them an opportunity in high school would be a great experience. And then obviously, with my background of UPBEAT service was the kind of trip I looked into. Uh, this organization though, had many variety of trips. They had uh, kind of like grade, um, not grade level, but content trips, they had science specific trips, they had social studies specific, they had leadership um, summits in Europe, they had service trips. So there's a wide. So, there's a wide range to kind of select from, and I went down the service trip track. So, EF Educational Tours, they are a world leader in international education. They have over 50-plus years of experience. They've traveled to over 53 countries with 500-plus schools. I've talked to two teachers from Connecticut that have traveled with them, not including Dr. Basso that has traveled with them before as well. They are accredited, so through EF travels, you can get certain academic credits. And I'll kind of explain that more. And they work to guarantee as low of a price by trying to group different schools together. So, if a school gets... Has 40 travelers, then their price is that. But if a school has 10, then they try to group you with another school to keep all costs low. Once you sign onto it, your cost stays at what the official agreement agreed upon price was. It's not like as it gets closer, it fluctuates. So, it's nice. Here is just a quick video. I'm not connected to this speaker, so... We'll skip this video and I can email it out to you guys. But the video goes into some students' experiences on these trips, traveling to different parts of the world. A glimpse into some travel in Asia, in South America, in Europe, and stuff like that. So, I'll email that link to you guys if you guys can see that as well. So, the trip that I was looking into is to the Dominican Republic. And it's an eight-day trip, and the title of this is "Empowering Children in the Dominican Republic." The focus of this is working with youth in schools in that area. The service is on more of an educational side. You're working with them on English skills, so working with them to teach them English and kind of some things like that. Ideally, we would look to travel next summer, so right after graduation. I know Saturday, the 20th, is that Father's Day, which, you know, track record shows that that tends to be graduation. But they are flexible, so they give a window. So, if we tell them we can't leave until the 21st, they're able to adjust. And also depending on what other schools you might group with, another school, you work it out. And so, they give you a window when you can travel. But the earliest departure is the 20th. And when I first talked with them, I didn't realize that was Father's Day. I thought it was that weekend before. But I'm sure if I begin with them, we can't leave before the 21st, should be fine. And then, the latest return, it says, is Sunday, July 5th. Could potentially be the 6th, as a little window. So, safety is obviously a huge aspect of international travel. Parents and board members and administrators, they want to feel comfortable sending their kids abroad. So, one thing that... A few things that EF provides is you have a 24/7 tour director. And that tour director is Island Wolf from the area, but works with the EF Educational Tours company. So, direct international with them. They need you right when you get to the airport, and they're with you till the moment you leave. You have a local presence, a 24-hour emergency line. So, through your tour director, you have 24 hours emergency care and service. They have what's called a peace of mind policy. So, as you get close to the trip, if there are kind of circumstances that as a school system, we can't go any longer for whatever reason, they're able to push the trip back or potentially give a significant refund, if not a full refund. There are stipulations into what would fall under that. But they're looking at the policy, it's very flexible. Do they want to... They want to encourage us to go on a trip, but if for some reason outside sources say we can't for whatever reason, if it's, you know, trouble in that area, or, you know, anything that could happen in the world these days, there's that kind of policy. And another aspect of the safety policy is there's... Through EF, they have an extensive liability insurance. I know, you know, where do injuries fall on this? Through EF, you are covered in addition to, under the board policy. And they have a... It's a million-dollar-per-incident coverage. So, it's a very extensive coverage for... If someone were to get hurt on Monday, and then on Tuesday, each incident has that same amount of coverage. So, that's always a nice kind of aspect to feel comfortable that, you know, if something were to happen, we have that kind of coverage. So, the group travel aspect is kind of what I mentioned earlier, where if we don't have a certain number of students, they look to group us with other schools, potentially not necessarily other schools in Connecticut, but could be other schools around the country. So, that aspect keeps it affordable, keeps it at a reasonable cost, allows students to still travel, and, you know, gives that flexibility to match us with other groups. So, some aspects of the trip that you get out of it educational-wise is you can collect three college credits from traveling on this trip, and there is some extra coursework and a small extra cost that goes along with it. Things in over $200 or $250, and a little bit of extra coursework. So then, you can get three college credits. And the college credits are from University of Southern New Hampshire. So, a fairly well, you know, a well-known institution that hopefully those credits could transfer to other institutions that you might be applying to. It's also a great experience to put on a college application. You know, when you talk about what you've done, you know, a lot of college applications, they don't care that you played a sport or you've done this. They want to know what other experiences you've had and that you'll bring to their institution. So, definitely an experience like that could really add on a college application or an essay. So, some of the service learning is... Big thing is this cultural immersion. We work with the schools, we work with the community leaders. And another level to it is leadership development. So, you... After your service in the afternoon, you meet with community leaders and you talk about kind of what's happening in their community. Some days, you'll come up with an action plan or things that you guys... That the students could do going home to continue to support it. So, it's not just an eight days, we're done, we're out, and then, you know, we forget about it. It's how can we continue this service? How can we continue this effort going back to Burle? So, out of the students that we would like to attend on this trip, we are really looking for a service learner, some that's willing to kind of unplug, step away from, you know, our devices, our technology. We will be in good accommodations, but in areas like that, you won't always have service. You won't always have, you know, access to your phones. And it's really encouraging to step away and be in the moment. Can you handle bugs, open to try new foods, you know, respecting the local people and the culture, and willing to kind of give your 100%, 110% into this experience. Everyone says with anything you do, or whatever you put into it is what you'll get out of it. So, you know, it's really encouraged that if you're going to be attending a trip like this, that you're ready to give your all to it. A little bit about our experience is we will be... Can't pronounce it. But I think it's Santiago. That's what we'll be flying into. From there, we travel to the northern coast region. And part of our sightseeing is we will be visiting the Mangrove Forest, which is within a bus ride travel from that. From Santiago to the northern coast region is a bus trip. It's not... You don't have to... We don't have to take another flight, so there's bus transportation there. And then, you'll also be getting your service project by working with the local school. So, some highlights of the trip is you'll be participating in a local service project at one of the schools. You'll explore the Mangrove Forest by boat. You'll take a guided hike on the beautiful north coast and practice your Spanish with the locals. Obviously, immersing into that local culture, you're going to work on your speaking skills. I don't know Spanish, that's why I've talked to some staff members that do know more Spanish than me, and they are interested in going as well. So, just kind of a basic day on the tour. In the morning, you'll have breakfast. You'll head to the local community center or school, where you'll help the teachers teach English tutoring lessons or sessions to students there. In the afternoon, you'll have lunch, and then you'll visit... This is one of the sightseeing trips, so you'll visit the Mangrove Forest and take a boat ride. And so, then, not every afternoon, you'll do that same trip. They'll have other sightseeing or community integrations. And then, in the evening, participating in a conversation about how someone's circumstances influence his or her opportunities in life. So, a big part of this trip is really reflecting. Students are given a journal at the beginning and are asked to turn all their way through the trip and reflect it on kind of what they have compared to what these students in this community might not have. So, it's definitely a very reflective trip. So, some of the travelers have said that 95% have expanded their knowledge of the world around them. 92% discovered more about themselves. 98% grew more confident and independent. And 89% understand more about new people, places, and cultures. So, that's a kind of little bit of background of the trip. And obviously, the big thing that a lot of people want to know is what's the cost? So, the overall... So, the overall cost of the trip is $3,230. So, it sounds expensive, but there are a large number of things that you get with the... Included in the trip. Okay. So, what's included is round trip airfare, safe, quality hotel rooms. So, students will stay in hotel rooms with private bathrooms. It's not... This isn't a trip where you are staying with local community members or families. You are, you know, staying in a hotel resort. It's setting for safety, that safety aspects and privacy aspects. You have 24/7 available tour director, on-tour transportation. You get an educational itinerary, guided tours and activities, breakfast, lunch, and dinner each day. Travel support team. What this organization sets up for you is a tour donation page, so somewhat like a GoFundMe. So, you have your tour donation page, so you can send out that link to family and friends to help them support the cost of your trip. So, that's a nice aspect. We share online educational platform, uncommon app, college essay toolkit, certified service hours. So, for districts that have graduation requirements for a number of service hours, you would get this on this trip. Burle does not have a service hour requirement. Leadership of building activities, you'll get a backup. And then, the Global Travel Protection Plan, that is included in the cost of the trip. And that safeguards people as they get closer to the trip. If they cannot attend, they are able to get a refund back on the trip for whatever reason. So, there's kind of that travel insurance for them. Things that it doesn't cover is the passport and the visa, the airport baggage fees, spending money, additional snacks, tips, and college credit. So, that's an additional cost. Like you said, that's between $200 and $250 with additional coursework. So, if you were to go on this trip and do the college credit, it would end up being around $3,500 for the trip and college credit. For anyone that has sent their kids to college, that was, you know, about the cost of three credits at the University of Maryland. So, that's how I compare it. So, in order for someone to sign up, they would need to put down a $95 deposit. Then, there are payment plans. If it was bi-weekly, it'd be $131. Bi-weekly, from June 20th this year to June 20th, when we leave. If you were to pay monthly, it'd be $226 in full, $230... Sorry. And the kind of added aspect to it is you have that donation page in which you can collect funds, which will end up making that last payment the least. It wouldn't kind of span out across the payments, it would just make that last payment the least. And... So, I know I'll do that very quickly. I didn't want to kind of take up... Does anyone have any questions for me about the trip, about the organization, anything like that?
How will you... What grades will you consider for this?
So, I would consider all four grades. This organization does trips from middle school up to high school. I talked with a teacher that does middle school trips out of Bridgefield, and then a high school teacher that does trips out of Canton. So, I would be... I would open this up to freshmen through junior year because it's a year of life.
So, and this falls outside of the traditional school year?
Correct.
So, my question is, and perhaps Brian, you can... You may be the one to answer this, is does it require board approval since it is outside of the school year?
Jack and I had that conversation, and Jack is... Was in contact with someone that does it outside of the school. But the thought is, if it's going to be sponsored by the school, even though it's happening after the school year, and there's going to be fundraising, and Jack as the UPB coordinator is going to run it. You know, there's... Whether it's an UPB trip, which is tied to the school, or it's a Burle High School trip, even though it's outside, there's still a lot of implications for it because Jack's running it.
Is there a minimum-maximum? Like a minimum of how many people, maximum of how many?
So, the maximum is 40. Say, you know, one in 40. The minimum, they don't have a minimum. Generally, it would be six people is probably there. If you had below six, then you probably wouldn't do it. They're hoping for around 20, so then grouping with another school would get you up to that 35, which they generally travel and group with about 35. So, they're hoping to get between 50 and 20.
Would staff get to themselves?
What?
Staff, would they get to themselves?
No. So, for every six students that attend, the adult is included.
So, their $3,230 would include a portion of...
If you get, say, staff, yes.
One, six.
So, if you get 12 students, then two staff are able to go. If you get, you know... So, if you get 10 students, only one staff's able to go.
How many...
A staff could pay if we, you know, if we were to get 10, then...
If you had more than... More staff than...
Yeah. If staff wanted to, they could pay. And the added bonus for the staff is you can also get graduate-level credit as an adult attending the trip. So, you can pay for a graduate level and do the staff extra coursework to get three random bonuses.
Just a question.
Yeah?
Just out of curiosity, I mean, they do travel all around the world. Why choose the Dominican Republic?
So, we were looking into two trips in that timeframe. So, they were traveling to the Dominican Republic and then Ecuador. And Ecuador was definitely a very appealing trip. It was more of a science service place, so more environmental science, so planting trees. You would travel out to actually the fabulous islands, which was something very interesting. For the first trip, it was more expensive than this one. It was a little bit longer. So, out of the two time... Two trip options they had in that timeframe, I felt comfortable with this. Also, you know, I think a lot of... In my experience working with UPB students and even a lot of high school, they enjoy working with the elementary kids, working with other kids. So, I think that this would have been an experience. And also, to see students in a different country definitely is an eye-opening kind of experience to see, right, what was it like elementary school for me, now what is it like for that? So, that's kind of... It was those two options, and I went more to this one because it was cheaper. So that's kind of, it was, it was those two options and I went more to this one because it was, it was cheaper for the, for the first trip.
Do they only do Latin America or do you other places?
They do all over the world. They have trips that go to China, to Europe, Asia, all over the, all over the world.
Any idea what kind of interest you have?
So I've talked to a few students and they seem very interested.
Yeah, but they didn't tell mom and dad it was thirty-two hundred dollars yet, though.
Right, so the idea is to, the idea is to then, at that parent meeting is having that. Because, you know, when you sit on that number, but without getting the other information, then that starts to kind of weigh our options. So the idea is that if we were to go forward, then we would have a parent meeting and present all of the information, what they're going to get, what the experience is going to look like, what the cost and how it breaks down for, for parents.
So I'm sure you've given this some thought. What does going forward look like?
From here? So what going forward at this point looks like is trying to set up, setting up a parent meeting prior to the end of the school year. So working with this company, they've, they're willing, they're coming, they would come up to that parent meeting, give some information from them. They would also speak, also two of the teachers that have gone on these trips from other towns in Connecticut are willing to speak at those as well. So going forward was, is putting out this information for parents, to students, and seeing what that interest is that that means. If the interest isn't there, then we might table this for, for a future, future year. Talking with the company, I said, you know, what if, what if we can't get something together for next year? She's like, no problem, we can push it back to two thousand and twenty-four. They're very, they're very flexible and, and willing to kind of work, work with us. What they normally say is keep it in a, in a year because when you have it over two or three years, then, you know, in order to sign up necessarily in time, if you're a sophomore or freshman, parents are like, ah, three years away, not really thinking about that. So they, they do recommend do it within a period of time.
Do we have any, any idea of what the board liability would be or, or risks? I mean, obviously, there's a million risks, right? So.
Even with the insurance policy that Jack spoke of, there still is board liability, obviously, if it's a school sponsored trip, just as there's any field trip. And that's the rationale and why I wanted Jack to bring it here. Obviously, taking a global field trip outside of the country. If you look at some of the other districts, and we spoke of this before, there are many districts that have these type of trips or service trips attached to their education. So it's a unique opportunity, but the liability is definitely there, even with the riders that Jack, Jack talked about. And I can get, I can get more descriptive from Kerma, our insurance company, about.
Yeah, we'd have to consider that before we can, you know, really.
We've actually, in Southington, we've used DF Tours a lot. It's worked out very well, it's really organized. There's never been a trip that has any issues. The only issue we had was when the Icelandic volcanoes erupted and they kept the kids from getting out of Europe because they closed all the airports for a couple of days or a few days, like getting back. But the food, the organization, the structure, everything has gone very, very well. The only thing was that, you mentioned the college credit issue. There's also a high school credit piece of this that's in their little brochure. That has caused a little bit of, of a problem because kids are sold the bill saying, hey, you can get high school credit for this, but they don't bother to get the approval ahead of time. And some girl did a PowerPoint for me and wanted high school credit, which was basically a PowerPoint of her trip. So the idea of getting it all approved in advance was with, through the administration of the school was a big deal.
And that's why I left that part out of it. I, to me, I, I thought, and I didn't ask this question further to them, I thought that high school credit would be that, because a lot of schools have that point five service credit, that service hour, so I thought that's what they'd apply to. But Berlin, Berlin doesn't have that requirement. But if it's, if they have that option, you know, obviously, if, you know, with, with you guys in misuse this, agreeing to potentially get high school credit.
Well, the company, well, if the company comes and speaks to the parents, they might sell that point.
Right.
You just want to communicate to the administration.
So Rich, it's helpful to hear that from someone who's, who's, you know, encountered this company and has, has students that have gone through that. So that's a little bit of comfort for me, even though.
Multiple trips every year we've had going through it, no issues.
Even though I was lucky enough to have a, just like you, a child who traveled abroad for six months. And all of those things that you listed are all values they came back with. But, you know, we have to look at how it impacts the district overall. Eileen?
Just a couple of other things that I wanted to mention. The last two high schools that I worked in also had a wide variety of, of country travel. Some of it service, some of it purely like language immersion that even expanded into two and three week long programs in the summer, where they were partnering up or doing, then also doing exchanges. And sometimes they would partner with another district in order to make it a little bit more cost effective. The other thing too is that it is, you know, it would be a really nice opportunity to offer to our students. As a family, it could be potentially very, even more expensive to see your whole family somewhere. So in some ways, we may be able to offer an opportunity or service that has a family may not be able to do for their child. I also think too, going into college and even, or any other sort of post-secondary work or opportunity that this could really be a potential growth opportunity. I have to be honest with you, I put a lot of feelers out this year, trying to encourage people to start to look into this, to see if they're really interested in really Jack's. Jack's really the person that came forward to be like, yeah, I've been thinking about this and I'd really like to pursue this. And so I was really happy to see that he was willing to come forward. And, you know, we are in a little bit of a sliding timeline, like we don't necessarily, we don't necessarily have enough interest for, you know, a year from this June. You know, we can certainly put it off because it does take time. You typically have to be at least twelve, if not eighteen months ahead of time. But I do think that this would open the doorway to craft, to craft, write other opportunities. Music groups that go and travel abroad, students that are in world language will take opportunities. Some kind of science programs will take, take opportunities to travel abroad and experience a wide variety of things. And while you do want to be careful because you don't want necessarily run these things all the time, you need to start to get yourself on a cycle and kids can plan ahead of time and have things to look forward to when they're going to come into high school.
Thank you.
I, I just, I just wanted to say, I mean, I applaud both of you to really push for this. I think it's a great opportunity. I think it's, you know, something that's very commonplace that other districts do. I personally, I had zero hesitation about moving forward. I, you know, understand that we want to take these things seriously, but I, I hope as a board, we could move very, very quickly to, 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 to give this opportunity to move forward because I think time is of the essence. And if we really want to have the opportunity in two thousand and twenty to get that message out very, very quickly, it would be useful.
So our next board meeting is June tenth. But what I would say is that Eileen and Jack is, is, I, I, without a major objection, I would, I would encourage you to start with the parent meeting because really the first step is to find out what interest there is. Without the interest, there's no program. I think that probably you would get approval. We would have to, you know, we'll find us more details and particularly, you know, talk with our insurance folks to find out what kind of liability the board has there. But I'm, I mean, personally, I'm an advocate of international travel. I think it, it's a wonderful opportunity for, for kids to see other parts of the world and, and experience other cultures and, and, you know, meet different people and so forth. So I, I think that what you would need to do though is get a meeting of, you know, an organizational meeting on the, on the calendar to find out if there's any interest.
Yeah, and we wouldn't even be looking, say, the initial deposit is ninety-five dollars. Like we wouldn't be looking at that until early fall. So it's not just to generate interest and then if people really want to commit and we come back early on in the school year, definitely we would really look for people to fully commit to that.
So the way it kind of outlines is at that parent meeting, then from there, there's a link in which you can, if, you know, after that parent meeting, people are on board and they want it, you know, they can make that deposit at that time. People can sign on at any point along the process.
Jenna's already filling out her application.
People, people could sign on at any point along the process. It just gives you a small, a shorter portion of time to.
So let me ask, so you said you would look at all four grades. But the reality is you would leave after high school graduation, which means you're really only looking at three grades because those kids will have graduated out of the system at that point. So would you open it to the junior through eighth grade as a step up eighth graders for information?
That would be, because they'd be coming in and.
Because they would be freshmen, is.
So yeah, that would be, that would be my thought process.
That's, that's, that was the question, okay.
We should always talk about that because, only because sometime, I mean, I'm certainly open to it, but that would definitely be a conversation with parents, like they would have to be really willing to send a child that has at that point times fourteen or fifteen. And you'd want to make sure that that, you know, that child is definitely like ready and willing.
That's actually where I was headed, was this.
We actually discussed that whole notion of that graduation would actually fall before the trip.
The trip would leave, yeah. So really, you're looking at probably three grades realistically. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. What's up, Jim?
I was just going to point out, the, the two sixty-two roughly month or biweekly cost really were worth up to twelve payments. So even if parents didn't start paying until September, they would be done paying by March conceivably.
No, it was, it was one thirty-one biweekly.
Biweekly.
Two sixty-two is per month.
Okay.
It's roughly eight dollars and seventy-nine cents a day.
Roughly?
It's the info.
McDonald's value meal. Thanks, Jack. Okay. Where are we next? Summer instructional program.
That's us.
Shut that off.
Yes, please.
I don't think it's comfortable. Look, you got sweat on you.
Cindy and I can't believe that the end of the school year is already here and we're talking about summer school. This is just a brief summary of what our summer school program looks like. So as you've heard in the past, we have a five week program and we have a four week program. The five week program runs from June twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth. It's four hours a day, five days a week. And this is really for our most significant learners. You've heard us talk about the BLAST program. So it's really our students in the BLAST program from preschool up to middle school. Background, so how do we determine this? So right now, we have about four hundred and sixty students identified as special education students. Four hundred of, four hundred and three of them are actually in districts. So the, the other students are either in out of district placements, private, Moreland, St. Paul's, or Magnet schools. So out of our four hundred and three students, right now, as it sits today, we have about a hundred and twenty-five students recommending and attending summer school. So it's really our most significant students. And on the front page is the criteria that we ask our staff when we're in our meetings with our families. Who are those students that are eligible for summer school services? So we look at the nature and severity of the student's disability. We really look over April vacation, Christmas vacation. Who are those students when they come back after being off a week, lose skills? And it takes them a long time to get caught up because that's significant, being off for two months of school. So who are those students that really need to be part of our summer programming? So when they come back, they're in a good place. Then we have some students with just more significant needs, they may have aggressive or self-injurious behaviors. They may have some stereotypical behaviors that it's just important to be in the same routine and structure for, for that month of July. So on the back, we just, again, in these numbers, we have PPTs right now going up to the last day of school. But it says three preschoolers in our four week program. I did reach out to Michelle, she said we're up to six right now and it could go up even more. So this gives you a breakdown of who our students are, what program they will be attending. The choice students, that is a double number, so that eighteen is already included in our Arcade of Five numbers. But we do have a significant number of students who participate in our choice program who will be attending our summer school program, which is helpful for these kids. And there's the breakdown of the staff that we need.
If the choice students attend summer program, are those funds reimbursed by Hartford?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Everything but transportation, because they don't bill us for transportation. But yes, when we give them our, our, our bill in October, include summer program. You know, I know.
Only ask because you know the questions that we get all the time.
Yep. What's been asked in the past, you know, I know Rich and Carrie brought it up last year. The, the four hour, the four week program, three hours a day, you know, three days a week, doesn't seem like a lot. I asked Cindy to really look at the students' IEPs. At the elementary level, if we go above that, we're actually giving them more that's in their IEP. So the elementary level, we are doing what's required by the student's individual education plan. At the secondary level, we are a little below, but again, that's because the secondary, we look at special ed hours according to the classes. So if they're in an English class at the high school, how long do those run?
Three hours, forty minutes.
Three hours and forty minutes a week. So just by default of their classes, their English class, their math class, and their writing class, it's a period, it's a full period. So that's what they're getting for special education services. I did, Rich asked me to reach out to Southington to see if, are there creative ways to do summer school? Would it be helpful for Southington and Berlin to combine a summer school program to see if we can save some cost? Or do we do it with Cromwell, do we do it, you know, who's close to us? I reached out to Meg Walsh, the director there, we're going to get together over the summer. Because Meg, Meg lit up on the phone, oh yeah, I think that's something we could do, but will it be cost benefit? You know, with transportation, staff wise, yes. So Meg and I will hook up over the summer and see if, if that's a way that we can have a cost savings to both towns. Because I know that's where we are sitting right now is.
So any collaboration wouldn't be this year, it would be next year, if any.
Correct, correct, the following year, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know that we have textbook adoption up next, but I also see that we have a family sitting here with two little ones. So without any objection, I would like to move the healthy foods discussion up one. Do we need to?
I don't think we need to do anything, I think we can just swap it around. However, their younger one is going through just about every book in the library, so they may want to keep him on that base.
Summer reading will be like two minutes and the textbook adoption should be about.
What's that?
The summer reading should be about two minutes, put this up next.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Lori?
Lori, Lori, would you do summer reading real quick? Yes.
We're not going to move things after all.
You all should have gotten this in your packet, did you? Okay, so this has all of the details of what our expectations are at the various grade levels for summer reading. So the purpose of me being here tonight is just to remind you of how important that is in case someone comes up to you on Wallfield and says, well, I'm going to make my kid read during the summertime. Why is that important? So what we know about children and what they gain and what they lose by reading or not reading. Students can lose up to three months of reading progress over summer if they do not read. So if we take a look at that and they lose three months this summer, and then they get that back during the school year, but then they lose another three months the next summer, so that becomes cumulative. If we don't get kids reading, they're not going to make the progress that we expect them to make. If they do read, kids can gain up to a month. And so just having them read independently is a great thing. So in K to two, if they read ten to fifteen books, that's great progress. We expect that they'll maintain what they're doing. In three and above, we're talking all the way through high school, if they read four or five books, we think they're going to be doing what they should be doing in order to progress. So what we're doing in the schools, the library specialist and the reading departments at the different schools have gotten together and we've said, "All right, McGee has an author come in," and they talked about the author, that they came in, they talked about summer reading, they have another came in, so they'll just keep revisiting that whole piece. High school will do that during advisory, and elementary schools, pet libraries actually going to come in and then they're going to do some fun reading time on their own. You'll also see in this packet that the library specialist came in with the kids to say, "Hey, so what are you going to read this summer? What are some types of books? Where do you want to read?" You know, that type of thing. Because some kids, "Oh, I'm going to read with my parents. Oh, I like reading many books." Whatever works. But what the biggest part is, is just having access to books. So some of the things that we're doing related to that at the elementary level, we have books that will go home with students, and students self-select their books, so it's our choice. At the middle and high school, they have, they're encouraged to chuck books out of the lower school library and then the high school library and take those home with them for the summertime. And then our public library. So the public library has come in, they've opened, they work with folk McGee and the high school to get kids library cards and make sure they maintain their library cards. We've got teachers' library cards. We've talked about how to get books on tape, so really all access to any kind of reading that could possibly happen during the summer. So our job is just to keep kids reading, and we do that by providing access to books. So hopefully we'll have a lot of kids reading this summer. I know we'll have a lot of adults reading this summer.
Thanks, Lori.
Great.
Thank you. Thanks, Lori.
Thank you.
Questions for Lori?
Of course.
Thank you. Textbook adoption.
So we just had one book that was approved by the Student Achievement Committee earlier tonight. It's a textbook honors geometry book. Mrs. Thurston, the math department chair, can presented to the subcommittee, who supported her recommendation, and asks that you move forward with support.
Okay.
I move to adopt the textbook. Big ideas Math, A Common Core Curriculum Geometry First Edition by Larson and published by Sengay Learning, copyright 2019.
Motion by Tim. Second by Jamie. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. And now we'll get to the healthy foods discussion. So May thirteenth, board meeting, we asked Superintendent Benning to look into some sample policies for us for further discussion. You each have copies of those two policies. One is a hundred percent, if you will, restricted peanut, tree nut-free policy, and the second is a limited policy. And this is obviously all revolves around student safety and opportunities for, for students to be inclusive. As I said at the last meeting, I am in favor of the fully restrictive policy. I think it makes things kind of quick and easy, is it's simply not allowed and that's the way it is. But this is a discussion, so I open it up to the board for comments, questions. Brian, go ahead.
Just a little bit, just a little bit of thought on the process here. So we'd have a discussion tonight, and our next board meeting on June tenth would be, I would take the, whatever we decide on the policy, take these back, redraft them, clean them up, and then would come back as a first reading for a policy on the June tenth, and then possible adoption in July.
Brian, if you also just give a little background as to where these two versions.
Sure. We, we looked at about five other districts and what they had for their policies, and then did some editing. Our policies most closely align with Newington's. Newington seemed to have the closest policy. Their, their policy is really policy one with a few edits to it. And then policy two is what we spoke of at the last meeting, where it was changes from our current policy, but not totally eliminating all peanut and tree nut items.
So I guess my, my initial question is, you know, I'm looking at both of these policies. And I understand, you know, math position of, you know, the clean piece, but I think the clean piece that we were talking about before was the idea of no food for the birthday celebrations. When I'm looking at sample one, if I'm reading this right, so even in a classroom where there is no student that has any nut or peanut allergy, a student would not be able to have a snack that has any peanuts in it. And I'm, I'm just kind of curious where that comes from. I mean, certainly there's students that may have other allergies or other restrictions, and sometimes, you know, if there's, I'm trying to understand the harm of a classroom that there's no cases of peanut allergies in the classroom. I certainly understand the other parts.
The thought behind it is simply that if students switch, change classrooms or change that the, the oils could be on the desk or table if they're not wiped properly. So if the students are switching, it's not just in that classroom. Say they're switching for a science class or a group activity or something. That, that was some of the concern of why it was all classrooms. And just being, we did, the modification that was made is the pre-K five, that was something that I changed to pre-K five, that it would not be at the middle school level, it would just be pre-K five.
So in pre-K five, are there situations where the kids are changing classrooms?
There, there is. It's limited, but there is such as, you know, when they do their intervention block, there's changes, there are changes that, you know, two classes could get together for something, you just don't know. So that being the, the most stringent, I guess, in terms of what's allowed.
Well, the upper grades of pre-K five move from classroom to classroom to start, where with their maths or their sciences.
Absolutely.
Certainly specials. I guess the other possibility could be that a, you know, an environmental problem causes us to have to move everybody out of a classroom, you know, a flood or a pipe burst or something. And then you wind up putting kids in a classroom that you weren't anticipating having to put them into.
I don't mind that necessarily. The only thing that I'd be concerned about, just knowing carrots, that will probably. But to make sure that the teachers, I know you have this in here, but it says here on the second point, they will not be allowed to eat the snacks. So if they brought in a pack of almonds, because that's their protein choice, they will not be allowed to eat, is so harsh. Will the, will the teacher have crackers or something there, because you don't, you can't tell us to maybe not eat a snack? So will the teachers have like goldfish or something for that situation?
You really want to try to get away from the teachers initiating or giving snacks because you just don't know. Now, the teacher has a list of what students are allergic to, but you don't know that's the case. So that's why, and it doesn't have to be at this level, it can be anywhere in between. That's why I drafted, you know, two, like, this is the, 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 the most stringent level, so if there's changes we want to make within that.
No, but I think Tracy's point is a good one. If a kid comes in with a bag of almonds because that's what they want, or the parent just wasn't thinking that day.
That's not the child's fault.
And the child is then caught by the teacher and said, "No, you can't eat these."
Right.
The kid goes home.
Well, it's the same thing at lunch, though. I mean, if a student doesn't have money for lunch or forgets their lunch, we make sure that they, they eat a lunch.
That's what I'll make sure.
Right, right. But we're, 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 we're just not serving anything that's tree nut, right? So it's, you know, even if a student forgets their lunch several times, and they no longer can be provided with, you know, a choice of their hot lunch, then it's a sun butter sandwich, is what they used to get, but it's not a peanut butter sandwich. So.
So let me ask you that, that question. So my son took peanut butter to school every single day, for, that was his sandwich from home. Does that mean that he won't be able to do that in this policy?
No, no, because we're, we're only talking in the classroom.
Because they have to actually wash their hands as soon as they're going to eat.
And we still would have the ta, you know, we still would have a table that would allow, you know, that students would know that if they're allergic, that they would not be at the table with that. So they could have their peanut butter or whatever they wanted for lunch, it's just in the classroom.
Cafeteria sells chip bags or things that are approved if a child needs that.
Yeah, so we could get him a snack. That's not a, yes, we would. But we want, you know, if we, if we have to, yes, but we want, we want to deter that, we want to deter that it's, okay, you know, I have a snack here for those students who need it, and then it potentially, if it was an issue.
Okay, so they do.
Yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to let anyone, you know. No, absolutely not. No, no, and same thing goes for lunch. We're not going to let anyone go hungry.
So just for the, for the board and the people here, and if anybody's out there watching it, if you see me on the phone, it's because people are sending me updates about the referendum. There's no results yet, but I asked them to, to send it to me when it came along, so it's not that I'm being rude, it's I'm trying to pay attention to the referendum at the same time. Sorry to interrupt the discussion, because it's good.
So the next one, snack choose in classroom lessons. That's a big one that, is that going to be across the, is this just K through five, pre-K through five, or is this across the board?
No, it'd be, it'd be pre-K five.
Okay, so I know people reward teachers with Starburst or something like that, so that will not be allowed anymore.
They shouldn't, they shouldn't, they shouldn't, they should not be doing that. According to healthy foods, they shouldn't reward, that's our healthy foods, they shouldn't reward with Starburst or any type of candy.
MSLT programs.
Any type of food, right?
They shouldn't be doing that at all.
They shouldn't be. That's in our policy, so.
So for celebrations, like all three of the schools do a fifth grade celebration, I know some are onsite and some are offsite. So like what we did this year at Willard, and we're actually purchasing food from cafeteria and then providing pizza for those that can't or whatnot. But that would change how we would do a celebration such as that if we, which I, believe me, I don't like this sample too, that you can, some, I don't like that at all. I like this where we don't have that available, but if we're having those sort of celebrations, fifth grade party or whatnot, I think it would, does the school provide, I mean, they do pizzas, but you could purchase things.
Anything, you could, anything that's, yes.
If you do, if you get the allergy or allergen whatever from, let's say you wanted to order a pizza or whatever, from a restaurant or bills, or wherever, you could do so if it was, you know, like, I'm confused as to.
Looks like you need two weeks.
You need like two weeks, but as long as you get the list of what's.
Ingredients.
Ingredients.
And it goes to the.
That could still be provided.
The only, the only thing we need to be cleaned up here is the birthdays may be acknowledged with non-food items. If we're saying in number one, it really should be birthdays can only be acknowledged with non-food items, we're saying, right? So it's just, can only be, so it's, or must be.
So then there's school-wide events, no peanut products at all? And then if there's other sorts of allergies, we would have to be obviously aware of that?
Well, we, we probably would add sesame to this too, after the fact.
Yeah.
But, I mean, if the, if the item is coming from our cafeteria, we're saying that it's
We, I'd like you to say, I think what I'm trying to say is that no item should be from any homemade item, which we have up here, but to make sure that in any.
Okay.
School-wide event, that if something is going to be provided that's not purchased from the cafeteria, then it would need to be from.
Well, it says prepackaged right here, prepackaged and clearly labeled with allergens, science posted.
That we would.
Right.
Okay. So two packets here, we got, like, our fifth grade party is outside, but we ask parents to fill out in the beginning of the year, all your allergies, everything you have, and we discuss, we order food outside, so like, let's say we get Bell's Pizza or whatever, it is discussed and everything is looked at, and parents are aware of where we're going, what we're doing, and if there's any special needs, they can work it out and we take care of it. Is that we're not allowed to do that anymore? That's what I meant.
I'm just looking, I'm just making sure that it gets your health food.
Because we'll pay for it. Like, let's say we got a gluten-free, we make sure there's enough gluten-free.
Yeah, but you're, you're providing alternative food, must be provided for students with food allergies other than medically documented food-related conditions. So I think, I think.
Regular, regular Bell's Pizza.
By getting a commission from the parents' agency.
Yeah, you're fine with that.
But this doesn't necessarily address the issue of a student based on an allergy being separated completely from the rest of the class, which was also something that we were trying to address.
But then here, number one eliminates it, worthy for.
Correct.
Number two.
But I guess, so I guess district-wide events become a little bit different than classroom, but that is something that we were also trying to address.
So I think in the.
If you think of the picture of this young man here sitting by himself because somebody wants to go get a cupcake.
But I think in the classroom, by saying that they must be, then I think that eliminates it, right? So it's.
The birthday celebrations.
The birthday celebrations. Those won't be taking place in the caf anymore, so that part. No food. So when you go to the cafeteria, you're still going to need the table, but I think the question is now you're not having that cupcake, or someone's bringing in the cupcakes to have, and someone's sitting in isolation.
Right.
So that takes care of that portion. The other part it doesn't take care of, if, you know, a student doesn't have hot lunch or someone doesn't have hot lunch, then a student, if a student can only bring two friends or whatever, I think that's something, that's, that's an internal practice, it's not really a policy, that more than students can sit there than just two. But it's still going to be, if everyone brought cold lunch in, and the student with the food allergies has to sit at that table, there still could be some isolation there. But that is a safety issue and a safety measure that would need to take place, because if a student is bringing in that peanut butter and jelly sandwich, we don't want them at that table, because it's a safety risk. So that, that part, I think, is going to have to stay in place to some degree within the cafeteria, and I think it has to in order for safety. And I know more than two districts that do it that way, but I think there is a cognizant awareness of, you're not going to bring in, you're not going to have someone come with a tray of cupcakes and students are going to just kind of, like a vacuum, just leave the student. That, you're going to eliminate that.
So I, I'm in agreement with, I mean, Jamie, that for me, is sample number one is the way to go. With that said, it's also significantly str, this, this is a significantly stronger policy than we currently have in place, and as with all of our policies, as Tim knows, is we review them annually, and then this is one that we would probably have to put to the top of the list to keep on top of as.
Yes.
Things continuously change. So I think what Brian and I was asking for is which of the two policies do we want him to move forward to go through final cleanup through our, our legal counsel to put into an official policy format?
Absolutely. Which is sample one, which is the more suitable?
I agree with sample one.
Tim?
I think one, my only question would be, do we generalize it away from peanut slash tree nut free to the eight known allergens or whatever CDC list that we could reference, so that if a ninth shows up, the policy is not something that I have to look at every four months and re-adopt.
I'm, I'm with you a hundred percent. I was going to bring up.
The spirit of the policy committed is going to be doing some work after the budget's done today.
Jake?
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm Googling the eight known allergies. And the reason I am, because I, I'm not educated enough to know. I, I know with peanut allergy, I mean, there are situations where the smell of it can make someone nauseous or make someone sick. I don't know about the other eight allergies. If there's other allergies that perhaps don't, you know, it's not the smell, I mean, I don't know if that makes sense. I just don't know. You know, certainly, you know, I'm looking at other things here about, you know, gluten. I know I have a gluten allergy, if gluten's in the room, I'm okay. It's not as severe, so I, I don't know.
Fair.
Mr. Ramo gave sample number one.
Okay. So Brian, I think that we move sample number one forward, but we do need some clarification on the severity of the eight other allergens, but I think that they need to be addressed in some way in our policy, but I think to Jake's point, but your severity may be different than anybody else's, so I think we just need to get a line on, on what that means and what it looks like.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. All right. Any other questions on the food policy? Okay.
I, I know it's, it's, it's not in the, the list, but I don't know if proper to maybe ask any comments from patient people in the.
comments from patient people in the, here.
You know what, it's only fair. Would you like to, any comments or questions or?
Uh, well, my one comment is, thank you. This has been years of, of hope for you to get this point, and I'm thrilled Brian shared a little bit of policy, and I was hoping that we could go for it, so we'll feel thrilled and happy as well. And I agree, you know, considering all the other allergens is important. I can tell you, just from my own personal experience, it's typically the oil, we all love that going to react and scare, and it can get, and then that's, that's, not like me, oil-based, so not disease, can have that reaction, but it can not carry anywhere. I love him sesame too, since he's allergic to it, and they are trying to push that to be the ninth, um, allergen. So, um, it is not currently, it does have to be called on, it feels scary to us. So, um, so, yeah, we're excited.
We thank you for your, we thank you for your diligence and apologize for the frustrations that come with that.
Well, I'm just grateful we got here, so thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you. No, you don't have to be quiet.
It sounds like the rain stops, and that's a good time.
Okay, Brian, it says choice student update, but I'm assuming, assuming it should say student choice update, but.
Choice student update. I know there's been a bunch of discussion about the choice students, and so I prepared a, a one-page document for you. So, what you have in front of you is the enrollment.
Tracy's just keeping them all.
Rich, if you could.
So, now Jamie's got them all.
After discussions with several board members and some members of the public, I just thought it was nice to have a one clean sheet to get an understanding of where our student population is, as well as the student population of choice, the choice population where, that are special education students, that was a discussion. I just want to remind the board that when we have special education expenses that exceed the $8,000, those are 100% reimbursed by Hartford. So, if we have a student that's outplacement that is choice, we, the $8,000 is deducted, but then that student, the full outplacement is covered by Hartford. If they're receiving services in district through our staff, OT, PT, those services are billed to Hartford above $8,000 also.
A one-to-one pair of professionals.
One-to-one pair of professionals, if it's, if it's IEP for a student, then those are paid also. So, when you look at these costs, these are actually students, for the integrity of the students, obviously it lists what grade levels, but you can look at some of the cost that we're paying. And the ones that you're seeing that are under $60,000, those are not outplacements, those are internal costs. And you can see the students where there is an outplacement at each totaling up to $506,000. That is billed to Hartford annually, that we are reimbursed for the special education cost. Yes, the 39% of the students that we currently have in choice, 50 students out of 127, are special education students. That is three times the Berlin, students that reside in Berlin population for special, so it is much higher. The thought though, moving forward, looking at this year, only 14 students moving into the district, one at seventh grade, and then the rest at the kindergarten level, it, I believe that the ratios will be different with the students starting at that level. As you can see, at the first column there for K, we're looking at two out of nine students that are special education. So, I don't know if there's any questions?
Five, six, seven, and eight.
Yes, the middle school has the highest level, yes. The middle school in general has the highest percentage. Anyone that's special, let's be, yes. Yes, yep. Anyone that's special, do you have diagnosis? Yes.
Questions for Brian on this?
Only 39% of our choice students receive services.
39, 39% are identified as special education.
I think that would be probably important for people to know, I think we think it's a lot higher.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why, and there's, it's 50 students.
Right.
Out of, out of 127 that we currently have.
I think they're doing that.
No problem. I think it's good data to look at. I think, I think it also is good to track annually what grade levels. As I said, looking at the model we're looking at, taking students at the K level, we'll see how this, the trend and see what numbers. So, I think it'll be an annual report to the board at this time, and you'll see, you know, year to year, we'll get each year, and see how things move, so.
Can I just raise a point of caution, sharing this information, because since in some of the grades, there's only one student who receives special education services and one choice student, if you share that publicly, you're publicly identifying that particular open choice kid as.
Oh, right, I just said 39%, like, I think people think it's like 70 or 75.
Yeah.
And they're thinking that less money and this.
Well, this is reflective of students who receive special education services, not of reading support or math support or other services that are available to.
What Erin's saying is, it's descriptive if you share that, if someone knew who that one choice student was, and in one school, and it's one label, they could distinguish who. That's why the numbers at the bottom, I, I grew them as elementary, so you don't know which students are special education within the group or what their disability is, to try to, so. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. All right. Next up is the budget discussion. And as of, uh, let's see, two minutes ago, we still do not have results of the referendum out there. So, what I thought made most sense is essentially to go, you know, put publicly on record that that I shared with you, which is a summary of the last town council meeting that Brian and I had the honor to, joy is a good word, to attend. I will start with, with the, the mayor kind of cornered Brian and I at the very beginning, about five or six minutes before the meeting was supposed to start. That would have something to do with me arriving there about five or six minutes before it started. And he wanted, in essence, approval to reduce our budget from the $500,000. And I was not going to back down. There is conversation that has taken place about our ability to pay ESS out of this year's budget, or does it need to be paid out of the, the year in which the services reside? So, past practice would be that we have paid ESS out of the previous year's leftover money for the, for the forthcoming year. We have heard mixed opinions on whether that is okay or not. We have Jerry Perdis on the Board of Finance, who said that that is not an allowable practice. He is a, he's a well-respected auditor, he does town audits and Board of Education audits, you know, as that was his job. Brian had a conversation with the Assistant Superintendent of Finance over, in Meriden, he said, not really an allowable practice. I had conversations with a couple of other districts, and they said the same. We've heard through our own interim business manager that it was allowable, as long as you only do it once within a contract year or a fiscal year, you have only one payment within the year.
Attorney.
Uh, our attorney said it's a gray area, it's up to, let's say, no surprise there, but it's up to the auditor that is, that is providing the audit services. Some will say that it's acceptable, some that will say that it's not. But the bottom line is, is that five minutes to seven, the mayor got approval from our, from Kevin Delaney, and saying, yes, we can do that, it's okay, so can I reduce your budget? And I said, no. Unless I have something in writing that will direct our business manager to allow that, I cannot in good conscience allow us to do a continual practice that may not be acceptable. So, if you can provide me documentation from an authority that says it's okay, then yes, we can have this conversation. Otherwise, no. In the $500,000 now is ESS, and is the, is the athletics that we've talked about. Unfortunately, those decisions mean that we will not be reinstating any positions, which is not what I want to be saying, but that's the trade-off. So, in the end, it would be safe to say that Mayor Kaczynski wasn't happy with me, but in the end, he did not reduce our $500,000 reinstatement of funds from the Board of Finance. What he did do, and we did agree to, was he took the $95,000 for the phones out of the budget, so, because that was on the town's side, in capital, he took that, he, he cut that completely, but with our agreement that we would, we would fund that out of this year's end of the year funds. We, we have that and we can do it. Hold on, I know, everything passed, town budget and the school board budget passed tonight, according to that text right there. So, that's good news. So, now, the rest of this conversation is moot, other than, I just want you to know what was taken back, so that we know where it is. The security was reduced an additional $100,000 with the agreement that the Board of Education would pay for the four security people's firearm, vest, radios, uniforms, and any other equipment. We estimate that to be somewhere around $10,000, $12,000 that we paid that out at the end of this year's funds. They took that out of the town side. And he made a hundred thousand, $100,000 cut, because we started doing the salary, people over, three security, three security guards, one director, roughly $200,000. That stayed, he took 100, we were at 300. So, we add that up, along with $25,000 on the town side here, and the $178,000 that the Board of Finance had already reduced, he was looking to offside, offset the $500,000 so that it, that it wasn't a budgetary increase.
And a mill.
And a mill rate increase. He was able to get to within about $100,000 of that. But it was a difficult conversation, but one that needed to be had, and in the end, the town people supported us, so.
If we were planning initially to fund ESS for next year out of leftover funds from this year, that was our initial plan, and we're no longer gonna do that. Was there any promise or guarantee made to the mayor that we return that money back over to the town at the end of the year? I know we had to pay $95,000 for the phones out of that money, I'm assuming that's what it's coming from.
There was not any promise to give money back to the town, and in fact, I was pretty straightforward that we would, we would most likely fund as many of the capital projects that we could with this money at the end of this year, since they gave us zero capital in the budget last year, so. And that went kind of, without saying, like, that, that just was a kind of a, yup, that's what you're gonna do, so.
Good.
Questions on?
From a security perspective, we're at three plus a director?
Three plus a director. So, the director, the three would go to the elementaries, and we would still have SROs at the high school, and.
Until the police budget is squeezed.
Until, right. Not what we were looking for, obviously, I think we were somewhere at six plus the directors, so we were looking for six security folks, plus the director. We wanted two at the high school, one at each of the other schools, and the director, I think, is how we got to six plus. But frankly, it's a start, so. Brian?
We're at, that's, that's a 3.2% budget increase, or 1.4 million as compared to last year's budget. Gives us 44 million, my number here, which I think is correct, 44 million, 977,844,000 budget, versus, so it's a 1.4 million increase as compared to last year, to the operational, which is, that's the largest increase we've seen in the last six years.
I have a question.
Yep.
I could have missed it, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I figured, so $500,000, we have to bring in ESS.
ESS and sports. $100,000 from middle school sports, $50,000 for the freshman sports, and there's $50,000 worth of stipends that we talked about, most of which were attached to all of the sports at the end of the year. So, yeah, a lot of, you get to.
Now, some of the backlash we've been getting is that we're not reinstating anybody. That was not, that.
Correct.
And they, I don't know if you both came up with any questions, wanting sports to be gone, well, not gone, but pay to play and get that. Do we have a point on that? Because I think that's something that's going to come up more.
So, I, regarding pay to play, pay to play to participate, thank you, superintendent. I think that personally, I think that at some point, we're going to need to enact and implement something. The superintendent talked very strongly about why not to. I also would say that pay to participate to make up 200-plus thousand dollars is asking a lot of each of the individual athletes along the way. When you start, and that's just for the middle school and the freshman portion, that doesn't include the other million dollars that we have, we're not talking about right now. So, I, I think that at some point, we're gonna have to get there. The fact that we are. Bringing back any positions is part of the difficult decision that the Board of Education has to make based on what's going on at the time, and I know that everybody's got their own agendas and what they think is important. We have to look at it from a much higher level, and we're working off of the recommendations of the superintendent, who said that he can work with that. The, the reductions that he has recommended to us are reductions that he can work within, so I think that we need to honor that, and, and we know ESS is important, we know they have other support, and we know this, they're all important, everything's important, so.
For the assistant principal position at the middle school, is it something that will be discussed later, like, reworking responsibilities, that's?
Well, the, the, there's many issues, there's many, there's many issues at McGee without a second assistant principal. One of them is the PPTs and the 504s, all the management, that would have to be redistributed within the district of who's responsible for all those, because, you know, you'll, you could have, you can have four PPTs in a day, and that essentially is your day, other than, you know, greeting the students off the bus and.
You just have observation and things, it's still.
That, that we could, that will have to restructure within the district with other, other administrators stepping in. Discipline, discipline will still be done by the principal and assistant principal, yes.
So, that's that.
Well, it's just a matter of whether we can find funds and what funds are available to, to, to work that position, and any other position, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to, you know, echo, I mean, I think our biggest concern is really at the middle school and how to deal with behavioral issues without the, the support. You know, I mean, another thing is, you know, I know the, the capital funding was not ideal this year. You know, is there any opportunity to maybe have more cameras or something? Because I, I, there must be an exorbitant amount of time dealing with the, you know, he said, she said, and he said something else.
If the middle school, and I'll make this claim, if the middle school had the camera coverage that the high school had, it would be much different. The high school, you have complete coverage from the time the student gets off the bus, anywhere in the hallway, it's total coverage. Now, the middle school, we have a proposed camera coverage that will give the middle school all the coverage that the high school, you know, has. That, we're looking at, if we're not doing ESS, we're looking at using some of that money to get the camera coverage at the middle school, absolutely. And the recording system, do that. That doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't replace an assistant principal, though.
Of course.
I mean, but, but it definitely gives us from a safety perspective of, you know, the hallways and coverage and the amount of time investigating things.
Matt, from your perspective, are we still open to a conversation about creating an additional revenue stream out of parking?
Absolutely. I, I don't think that's off the table. I think, from, from my perspective, I think that's an easy one. I, I think it comes down to, do we want to do it, and at what, at what rate is what it comes down to, and it doesn't have to, I mean, we don't have to start with a crazy rate, it could be as simple as $100 per year. I, I don't know what the right answer is. I, I don't know what the right answer is. I know there's a lot of districts that do do that, um, and I think it's the same conversation that we had with, you know, activities, play, pay to participate, wherever it is, is we can talk about it, or we can do it, is, is, that's where it comes down to. So the one downside I see with putting something like that into play is that somebody has to track it all.
Yeah.
Right? So as you downsize administrators and you downsize some support staff, somebody has to track all that. Now, in my, in this particular case, 'cause it's parking passes, I would tell you it's gonna fall to the security director, and that's gonna be probably one of his jobs, but that's up to Brian to decide.
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely.
It shouldn't fall on an administrator as a clerical task.
So, but I think that's, that's where, where a lot of those.
I mean, I, I will say, just in terms of the sports, I mean, I think, just, your wording was, I think, very critical, I mean, rather than talk about pay to play or pay to participate, it's really a revenue stream to offset, or even a targeted tax to those who enjoy the benefits. Um, you know, and at least for the sports, if you look at the systems that are already in place, they're designed to take payment as you enroll in sports, so, um, I think the clerical cost will probably be minimal if you were to, again, offset by revenues from streaming.
So, I think we need to continue to have, I think we need to continue to put meat on that bone until we get what we think works.
Right.
Any other thing about the budget? All right. So formally, we thank the, the voters of Berlin for supporting the Board of Education budget and passing it in the second half of our, um, next up is, we have a personnel matter, and we need executive session, so, uh, take a motion to go to executive.
Move to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter, inviting the superintendent?
Motion by Tim, second by Jamie, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. And we are in executive session at 9:20.